Good evening and welcome to the Alachua County School Board, uh, School Board Meeting for August 21st. We want to welcome everyone here this evening at this time if you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated, and now moving on to career and technical education recognition, Ms. Ritter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm pleased to be here, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Andrew, and District Staff. We have a fun, uh, time for a few minutes here to highlight some of our very top students.
Very good.
Um, and I just want to say, these are from career and technical student organizations, or as we call them, CTSOs. What you've probably heard is FFA, DECA, FBLA, Skills USA, all the acronyms, right? Uh, but we're pleased that for students who place top at the state and/or national level. Um, and this really took place in the spring and then in the summer. So we're kind of bringing them back, and I will say, some of them have graduated and may not be able to come. They might be away at college. Uh, but I do just want to say, um, first of all, just who we have here with us tonight. We have Chef Pam Bedford from the Institute of Culinary Arts at Eastside. We have Mr. Brian Skipper from Santa Fe High School with the Academy of Veterinary Assisting. We have Mr. Eric Baez from Lofton High School's Academy of Gaming and Mobile Apps. And is Ms. Rocher here? Yes. Hi, Ms. Rocher is here from the Academy of Entrepreneurship at BuHoltz. Um, also, I'm thrilled to have with me tonight Ms. Jennifer Brimman and Mr. Patrick Key, supporting all of these teachers and programs, um, from the CTE Department. I do not know if Ms. Brothers is going to be here, but we will try to find her list of students to recognize as well. Um, those are the students from the Academy of Finance. So at this time, I would like to have Chef Bedford come up and recognize her students. You're first. Oh, you want to wait? Okay, she, she wants to wait for her one more kid. Come on, Mr. Skipper, you can do it.
Uh, good evening. I'm one of the FFA Advisors at Santa Fe High School and the Director of the Academy of Veterinary Assisting. Um, I'm here to recognize our aquaculture team, who included Ms. Jasmine Serrano, Jake Greenlee, um, and then not with us tonight, their swim meet is Naomi Cooper and Arabella Cooper. Um, but if they want to stand up, so, if they can. These, um, these students learned to identify important aquatic animal and plant species, test water quality, and developed a comprehensive business proposal for startup clam operation that they named Santa Fe Sun Raise. Um, they did multiple interviews with clam producers in South Florida to better understand how the industry worked. Um, they developed their proposal, they practiced it, they had it memorized word for word. Um, it was really impressive in our first year trying this competition at Santa Fe. Um, they had to present their plan to a panel of judges, and then they won first place in the state. So they're state champions. Yeah, that's worth clapping for. We also had a successful year for our Agriculture Issues Forum. Um, again, that was our first year doing that competition, but those team members include Taylor Batten, Taylor Trossler, Leela Sealy, Leila Paris, Alana Seals, Riley Kuhn, and Savannah Eckert. If they want to stand up, that'd be cool. These, um, these seven students, they researched the impacts of bottling water out of Jenny Springs, a topic that they chose because it affects our community and where they live. Um, the team members developed a 15-minute skit where each of them represented different stake, different stakeholders, um, including an agricultural attorney, a water management district employee, a concerned citizen, a hydrologist, a county commissioner, a private spring owner, and then a moderator from the League of Women Voters. They had to submit a very in-depth, uh, paper for judging where they looked at the advantages and the draw, and the drawbacks of bottling spring water. Um, and then they presented their skit at our state convention in June in Orlando. Um, they won the state championship, and they were headed to compete for a national championship in October in Indianapolis.
All right. You'll come up so you can take a picture.
Thank you, Mr. Skipper, and thank you guys for coming in your sharp FFA jackets. We appreciate that. Um, next we have Ms. Wendy Rocher from the Academy of Entrepreneurship at BuHoltz.
Hello, I'm Wendy Rocher from the Academy of Entrepreneurship Director. Thank you very much, Board, for all of your support for DECA and the other CTSOs that we have here today. Um, today I brought with me today a representation of our DECA chapter, a small fraction. Um, we have over 150 students who compete at the state level. This year, we took over 50 students to the international competition. Um, some of our winners that we have here today, Gabe Myers, was a part of a community, um, giving campaign which brought food to, uh, community members around Gainesville and at BuHoltz High School. They placed third place at the state level. We have Quinn Richmond, who, thanks to what he learned at the Academy of Entrepreneurship, has started his own business and wrote a business growth plan where he placed first place at state competition. We have Angelie Sherard and Mara Tilly, who did a project management in financial literacy. They have led the campaign where BuHoltz students go into Rawlings Elementary, Williams Elementary, and other Child's Elementary, other schools around the district to teach financial literacy to elementary students. They took it upon themselves to, um, grow upon that base, that basic framework. Um, and their mission is to expand that, to reach out to parents, so that they can increase the conversations that parents have with students about financial literacy from a very early level. They have gone above and beyond. They've worked with O2B Kids and connected with organizations in Georgia and Florida to really expand. They wrote curriculum, they worked really hard all year on this project, and they are continuing it this year. So we're looking forward to how they do in competition. Uh, we have Bryce Gillingham and his partner Ava, who competed in entrepreneurship team decision-making, a very difficult test that they had to play. They had to take and scored as finalists in international competition, competition. They got a s, business scenario in entrepreneurship. They had 30 minutes to prepare their response and pose their response to judges. Um, Jade Howell and Finn Mangan, um, also placed second place at the state level, went on to international competition. Their event was marketing management team decision-making, kind of the same framework, test, scenario, presentation. And then we have Katie Latham, who was a representation of our infamous school spirit spot. They competed in the school-based enterprise competition internationally. So very many thanks from BuHoltz DECA and all of your support. Um, best job in the world. I love watching how these kids grow because of these opportunities. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. They'll come up and take a picture. All of you all can come up front. They're mighty sharp tonight. All right. Thank you all for all of your hard work, to our professors.
And now we'll ask Chef Pam Bedford to approach.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Madam Chairwoman, Superintendent Andrew. I'm honored to be here to recognize the accomplishments of my students in the competition arena. First, I would like to recognize the students who were able to join us this evening. Um, our program CTSO is Skills USA, which is the number one workforce development organization for students in the nation with over 400,000 members. Adia Davis in Americal Homes competed for the first time in the wedding cake design competition, which is a three-hour competition in which they have to design a wedding cake. They chose to do a Tiana theme, um, which made my Disney heart very happy, but it also made my chef heart very happy because that is based on an actual chef. Her name was Leah Chase, and she was one of the first African-American celebrity chefs. Uh, they placed third in the state overall. Another first-time competitor, Eli Evans, competed in the restaurant service competition. He placed third in the state as well. Jonathan Manch placed second in the culinary arts competition. Not only is he a competitor, but he was also elected as a state officer for the 2024-2025 school year. During this year, he will be advocating for career and technical education, um, as well as advocating for Skills USA. He has been working over the summer as a member of the leadership team and will be traveling to Washington DC in September to participate in advanced leadership training, panel discussions with government officials, and in-person visits with elected officials on Capitol Hill to advocate for Skills USA and career and technical education. Um, there are a few students who, um, I would like to mention, who are not here with us this evening because, well, they just had their first day of college. Travis Coe, who placed first in the restaurant service competition, has started his freshman year at Valencia College in Orlando. I'm sorry.
It's all right. Take your time.
They're my kids. He will be pursuing his AA degree in culinary arts and will transfer to the University of Central Florida to finish his bachelor's in theme park management, which I can't wait. Maybe he'll get a job at Disney. Um, I might have a little method to my madness. Not only did Travis compete and earn scholarship dollars to continue his education, he also earned his Florida Cape Gold Seal Scholarship. His college is 100% covered because of the opportunities he had while participating in our program.
Right. That's great.
Next is Ian Vaught. Um, he is starting his first year, first day of college at Johnson-Wales University in Providence, Rhode Island. He finished second in the restaurant service competition. Um, he also earned his Cape Gold Seal Scholarship, among others, from participating, uh, in competitions. And lastly, Allison DeFranco finished second in the state in the baking and pastry competition. She is currently enrolled at Valencia College in Orlando studying baking and pastry and plans to attend the University of Central Florida to finish her bachelor's in restaurant management. Not only is Allison continuing her studies in her dream field, but she has already obtained a dream job with her dream employer, and she is currently working for Walt Disney World Resorts. Well, she starts this weekend, so. Thank you all for all of your support.
And thank you, Chef Bedford, uh, for the other night. You all did a very good display, uh, over at the One Mill. Thank you so much. Come on up.
Thank you, Chef Bedford. You always want to make me cry. And next we have, uh, Mr. Eric Baez from Academy of Gaming and Mobile Apps.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. We speak about keeping students in the classroom throughout the educational system engaged, but anyone that has sat in a professional development for adults, especially those pre-planning, and say that differentiated approaches can be done in the classroom as well for adults and in education systems and professional developments. What largely, what largely attracted me to lead the Academy of Gaming Mobile Apps was the ability to create simulations, education, and professional development that goes beyond the same old slides and textbooks. With the ever-changing world that we live in, we are able to do that within our classroom. The FBLA's Computer Game and Simulation has students create, have students create an interactive game where they're provided the opportunity to educate those who play the game. This student, not only is a model student within the classroom, constantly helping their peers, and also maintains a high GPA, and was only in their sophomore year, but this student at the state level maintained a, had a 98.5 out of 100 on the technical aspects as a ninth grader.
Hmm, that's wonderful.
The game provided an opportunity for, for those playing it, how to learn and manage business aspects. And it was fun. The game is also available on our website. If you go to academygamingsmoleapps pages slash three one six one six. Again, first place at the state level, we welcome Elijah Rudabo. Thank you so much.
Come on up and take a picture.
And next, representing the Academy of Finance at BuHoltz is Mr. Patrick Key, who's going to try to share the information so we can highlight those students as well.
Thank you all for tonight and allowing us to share this with you. Uh, for the Academy of Finance, Ms. Brothers, for, for FBLL State, we have the following. Caleb Wang won third place for Accounting I. Gila West won second place for Agribusiness. Adrian Palomarev won first place for Business Calculations. Keith Zhang won second place for Digital Animation. Nolan Gao ran, uh, won second place for Insurance and Risk Management. Vajay Hans and Philip Machew won first place for International Business. Alexander Hughes won third place for Introduction to Business Procedures. Anish Patel won first place for Introduction to Financial Math. Michael Whelan won third place for Introduction to Financial Math. And Mark Chow won third place for Public Policy and Advocacy. And then at the national level, we had, first place was Michael Way for Introduction to Financial Math. And also at the national level, we had second place for Adrian Palomarev for Business Calculations. And if anyone's here tonight, um, they can stand, but if not, thank you so much for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you.
And wrapping up is Ms. Jennifer Brimman with a couple of other, other programs.
So we do have some programs tonight who were not able to make it. Um, one of which, unfortunately, I do not have the names for these students, but our HOSTA program at the Academy of Health Professions at Gainesville High School did have a top-placing team at the state, and they were accompanied by their principal, Mr. Ferguson, to their international competition this summer where they competed. Um, so we do have a HOSTA team that is competing, which we're very excited about, and HOSTA's actually spreading our biotech program, is starting a HOSTA chapter this year. So we're very excited about the opportunities that our students are going to have in HOSTA this year. Um, also, our Academy of Fire and Emergency Medical Services had a student for the first time, uh, compete in the FBLA competition for healthcare administration. That student actually won third at state and was able to go and compete at nationals. Um, her name is Brooklyn Hillman, and she continued, after she won state, she worked really, really hard and actually beat out the two people that beat her at state at the national level to compete and win for fifth place at nationals. So that was very exciting. And also, our FFA chapter at Santa Fe High School had a student Jade McKillop, who, um, was able to place second at the state for ornament, ornamental horticulture, sorry, a lot of words, in the demonstration section, because there's several different ornamental horticulture competitions. So in the demonstrations, she had to compete in a marketing category where she had to demonstrate how to create a product in her business plan. She created a small floral business called Perfect Prom Flowers, where she created boutonnieres and corsages for high school students attending prom. She is a junior at Santa Fe FFA, and, uh, she was a sophomore at the time of competing. So she's not able to be here tonight because she has a swim meet, so. Those are some of the other things that are happening, and we are just so thankful for the district's support of these organizations that are just really broadening the experiences of our students. So thank you so much for allowing us time to share our student successes with you.
All right. Thank you all so much. For coming out tonight, and congratulations again to all of our students. Uh, you have some great things going on in career and technical education, and so we're just so grateful and thankful for what you have accomplished, those who will be graduating and going on. I'm so excited for you, uh, and I wish you well, um, in the future. Thank you all so much again, and to our parents who came out with them as well. Thank you so much. All right, now we're moving on to our ACA update. All right, thank you. Thank you for coming. Is anybody here from ACA? Oh, okay.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Staff. I'm Carmen Ward. I'm the President of Alachua County Education Association, and, um, thank you for this time on the agenda. We are very excited that we have made it through the first week of school into the second week of school. And, um, ACA again is the Certified Bargaining Agent for this year, and we saved this union last year. It's my honor to represent the 3,300 public employees that are in the bargaining unit, and we are going to continue to make progress. Um, we are at the table currently negotiating working conditions and salary negotiations, and our next bargaining session is September 9th, and that will be here at the District Office. And we are always amazed by the talented educators that we have in this district. And I just want to say, we had a very successful One Mill kickoff on Monday. And if anyone needs a One Mill yard sign, we have them at the union office for distribution. And we are going to have some t-shirts for One Mill at the union office as well, and we have brochures. Because the One Mill funds these amazing magnet programs that we just got to put like some faces on actual children and students that are beautifully impacted by our magnet programs. We have art, we have media, we have nurses, we have technology, all funded through the One Mill. And that should put us in a good situation to have good salaries for our employees because that is some funding that is a resource for this district. And so ACA is very, um, strongly promoting that everyone vote for the One Mill in the general election, and we will continue to, um, advocate for that. And, um, I just want to say, um, welcome back to all of our educators and our education support professionals. And I will turn it over to Dr. Testman, our, um, Vice President and Service Unit Director.
Thank you. Um, Chair McGraw, Board Members, Superintendent Andrew, District Staff. Um, just not much more to report, but, um, if you are a union member, you should probably have your materials from your, um, site leader or from being in your box. So if you don't have it yet, um, it'll be there shortly, and if it's not, please let us know. Thank you for all that everybody does.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
They're moving in properly seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Need approval for the special school board meeting minutes in public hearing and adoption of the 24-25 tentative budget and millage for August 1st, 2024.
I move second.
They're moving in properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of our regular board meeting minutes of August sixth. There a motion?
So moved.
Been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the school board workshop minutes from August seventh.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Is there, uh, Ms. Abbott? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to the chair report. Tonight, we have Mr. Bert Weatherington here from the Turkey Creek Lions Club. If you would come on up. I'll come back. Put your mic on. Can we hear? It's not on, we still can't hear you.
Okay, here we go, there we go.
There we go.
Okay. Good evening and thank you Chair McGraw for allowing me to be here. I am Bert Weatherington. I am a former school employee for Alachua County Schools when I was in high school, working at the school board warehouse. That's where my original cake came, with the school system originally. But I am here as the President of the Turkey Creek Lions Club, where we meet twice a month at the New York Pizza Plus in Alachua, Florida. Welcome to join us anytime you would like. We have partnered with the School Board of Alachua County with all schools to provide eye exams and eyeglasses to all needy families and I, and needy students in Alachua County. If any student or family is in need of eyeglasses or eye exams in any school of Alachua County, please see Ms. Janelle Green, who is the Director of Nursing. And she will then send me an email of who is in need and we will get with that school counselor. And they will help us to get these eye exams and eyeglasses to them. Myself, as a citizen, will be helping with the Alachua Elementary School PTA and Advisory Board. The Alachua Turkey, the Turkey Creek Lions Club will be partnering with Alachua Elementary School this year and helping with the backpack program for the holidays and spring break. So I invite you all to our meeting anytime that you would like to come. Any principal, administrator, and school board mentor, staff member, Ms. Jackie Johnson has been to our meeting and attended, and Ms. Janelle Green has been to our meeting. So we invite anyone to come. And I look forward to meeting everyone in the school system and helping out.
All right, and thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing that information. That is important. And thank you for helping out. What time did you say again?
Our meetings start at six PM, and you're welcome to join us for dinner at five-thirty. New York Pizza Plus is in Alachua, behind Hitchcock's Grocery Store in the plaza there all the way at the end. As you take a left at the traffic light, you'll see a sign that says Lowe's on the right. You go all the way to the end, just past the Domino's, all the way at the end. And anyone's welcome to join us every meeting. And we're welcome to have your input of how we also can help in any other way through the Alachua County Schools as well. As a community activist in Alachua County, I always love helping the youth.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for sharing.
Chair McGraw?
Yes.
Do we have a, a collection box here for glasses that folks want to donate? Is there one here in the building? Does anyone know? Because I have a couple boxes, a couple player glasses.
I can bring a box if anyone is interested. I am looking at different businesses who are interested in having boxes located, you know, to collect for eyeglasses. But we service mostly the Alachua area. They do have a Lions Club in High Springs, have a very small club here in Gainesville. But I'm not aware of any boxes that are in Gainesville. But I can bring one to the school board office or to any school that you all think that needs to be had.
Now, I have your number, so I'll follow up with you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McGraw.
Uh-huh, thank you. All right. The only other thing I have is September first, the superintendent's evaluation is due, and so we're going to send that out Friday, the same tool, and you all have until September first to turn it in. All right. Back to Board Member Superintendent Announcements. Looking for lights. Dr. McNeely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we have so many fantastic things going on in our school district. However, and we saw that with evidence tonight with all of our students being here. But however, I wanted to bring some attention to some special schools administrators and team members. Listen to this, please put your ears on. There are schools that have improved greatly. And they are in the area, remember now, school board members represent every district. But I'm specifying tonight District Four, because that is the district that I represent. So I'd like to share with you some names. I want you to listen and applaud at the end. Dr. Leclair at Lake Forest Elementary moved from D to C. The former principal of Metcalf, Mrs. Robbins, that school moved from F to C. Mrs. Stokes at Williams Elementary. And please know, I'm calling administrators, but it takes more than the administrator. It's the whole team of people within that school. So Mrs. Stokes Williams moved from C to B. Mr. Hawkland at Shell Elementary moved from D to C. Then we have Mr. Jones at Lincoln Middle School that moved from B to A. Now, we had other schools that maintain their school grade. I'm not going to call all of those out. It's a long list. But I wanted you to hear from me for the schools located in District Four. Congratulations to the administrators and their teams for all of the work that you have done. And I'm hoping much, much success this coming year. Now, would you please give a round of applause? Amazing, amazing. And Madam Chair, I would like to say so much more, but I'm sure that there are other folk on this dais who have much more to say. But please know that the work done by the teams and those administrators, and more importantly, the students, because they are the ones that have to do the extreme hard work. And it was done. Again, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Dr. Bakwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that Ms. Ward already mentioned this, but most of the board and many of our staff members who are here tonight had the joy, honor, and pleasure of attending our One Mill launch party on Monday. And I want to thank everyone from Florida Credit Union, who worked so hard to put that together, and everyone from our district offices who assisted outside of their work hours to do that. Because that is an effort that cannot be done during work hours. So people were putting in extra volunteer work to make that happen, and we really appreciate it. And I just want to remind our voters of all of the amazing things that the One Mill makes possible for our community, for our children, for our schools. If, if you notice in the news, again, at the beginning of this school year, many school districts have backlogs of tens of thousands of books that need approval for classroom libraries. Alachua County does not have that issue because the One Mill allows us to have a certified media specialist in every school. The students who were here being honored this evening, some of them who are still here, their programs are made possible by that One Mill. We do get CTE grant money, but it is not nearly sufficient to cover the breadth and depth of the programs that we have. So that is another thing made possible by voters approving that One Mill, as well as all of our fine and performing art programs in our schools. So the One Mill is extremely important to our community, to our students, to our staff members. If you've ever gone to a play, a music performance, an art show put on by our students, you're, the One Mill has helped cover that. And because this is a renewal, we're not asking to raise your taxes. We're just asking you to continue to fund these incredibly important programs. And that will be on your November fifth ballot. So make sure to look for that and vote for the One Mill so that we can keep providing these incredible programs to our students. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this was said earlier, but welcome, welcome back to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. It's good we still have some students with us, but welcome back to all of our teachers, staff, and employees and families that brought our students back to school. In the last week and a half, I've had the opportunity and actually, quite frankly, the honor and the joy to visit thirty schools. And school is certainly in full swing. And, and those encounters that I have with students and our colleagues on those campuses, they certainly enriched my life a lot more than I probably enriched theirs with my visit. But I just wanted to say on behalf of our schools, you know, please be patient with us. We're, of course, making sure that safety is our top priority as we welcome kids into our school. And then we work on the education piece, the love piece, the feed them, the nurture them in all kinds of ways, right? But Florida statute changed, and so the accessibility to our school sites may have changed. And we ask for your patience with that because it is our number one goal to make sure that our campuses are safe. So if you run into those additional safety measures when you come to our campuses, just know that it's the state's top priority. It's our top priority to ensure the safety of everyone on, on our campuses. Also, I just wanted to mention, so before school started on August tenth, on Saturday, August tenth, at the UF Champions Club at Ben Hill Griffin Stadium, Dr. Edwards and her team, as well as a lot of volunteers pulled together, a secondary student athlete mental health summit. We had keynote speakers there, we had breakout sessions, we had lunch, of course, we had giveaways. It was free and open to our students and their parents, as well as students from schools that aren't under our purview here as the School Board of Alachua County. And I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the sponsors that helped us with that. The Ed Foundation leaned into it, Domino's Pizza, the Greater Gainesville Area Chamber of Commerce as always, and Meridian Behavioral Healthcare helped us out with the summit. So we certainly work with kids all summer, and we were, of course, leaning into mental health prior to the start of school. And so thank you, Dr. Edwards and, and your team for putting that together and making that a reality. We had professional, former professional football player there as a keynote, and just all kinds of individuals, graduates from schools like Eastside High School and schools here in the district that could connect with the students, as well as students from Buholz and other schools that, that came in and shared resources. So in upcoming events that highlight mental health. So Madam Chair, if you would permit me, I would like Dr. Edwards to, she can share with us anything else additional from the Mental Health Summit that she wishes to. And also, I'd like to yield some time to Dr. Edwards to update the school board as far as our rezoning work and what we've been doing this summer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew, to you and to the members, Madam Chair, and to the members of the board. We are most grateful, of course, for all of the work. There were many hands that went into the work that was done to have our Student Mental Health Summit. And we continue to really highlight that work. There were many mental health practitioners who worked with us and came in, and I, I wanted to just make sure that we outline that, as well as district staff. But Mr. Andrew has done a great job in the summary. As we move forward, talking about our comprehensive rezoning update, I want to first and foremost say that we have established members of our district team to work together in the process, inclusive of Mr. Andrew, our superintendent, Dr. Kathy Atri, our deputy superintendent, myself as the Chief of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, Maria Yunus, our Chief of Operations, Jaqueta Rol, Chief of Teaching and Learning, Keith Burkett, when he was here, and then replaced by Gabrielle Jermusek, something like that, Chief of Finance, Jackie Johnson, our Director of Communications and Community Initiatives, we also know her as our PIO, Martha Moore, the Manager of the Office of Student Assignment, Uma Shankar, our Chief Officer of Technology and Information, Suzanne Nguyen, the Director of Community Planning and Concurrent, Dr. Donterius Rolles, when he was serving as Director of Transportation, but that seat has now been occupied by Desiree Fisher, who has joined our team, Kathleen Black, the Executive Director of ESC and Student Services, and finally, Kimberly Neal, Director of FTE and State Reporting. On January eleventh of two thousand twenty-four, the school board meeting, we know that Mr. Andrew shared the, his recommendation and reasons why for, he made the recommendation at our second reading to pause the rezoning efforts. The superintendent at that time recommended not to make changes to the current zone lines until further options could be brought to the school board for implementation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In February of two thousand twenty-four, our team, the district team, has identified just a moment ago, went into planning steps in our next steps. And so we began having conversations about what needed to occur. In the months of March and April, we researched options, made calls to school districts and agencies, did online searches that resulted in the consideration of ten options listed as the follows, as follows. Alachua County's Map Genius Tools, Planware, WXY Studio, Edge Log, Power School, UF Geo Plan Center, Mapitude, Flow Analytics, Davis Demographics, and Frontline. Each of those agencies were researched and contacted about opportunities that might exist for what our district was prioritizing. By the month of May, the district team meetings including, included virtual meetings with various companies to learn more about the actual products and services offered by said organizations. In June, the district team meeting and continued to have virtual meetings with companies, with follow-up calls, and contacted agencies to get feedback to answer additional clarifying questions from the district team. Discussion with the purchasing manager from our district also summarized for us the procurement process, and we, as a team, narrowed it to three selections from the ten. We continued at that point to develop an agency comparison chart to clarify input from each of the top three agencies for which we felt like could best meet our needs. By July of two thousand twenty-four, the district team decided upon the top two selections, held virtual meetings with references for top two choices, and requested a scope of work from each so that we might be able to move forward in making recommendations. Please note that as this has occurred, we were also in contact with our purchasing department for direction. And I want to make sure that it is clear that we, as we were going through this process, had many questions about whether an RFP was needed. So when we looked in August, which is, of course, this current month, we were prepared for an update in our process at the August sixth meeting. We were looking at, at that point, receiving scope of work from those top two agencies. The scope of work has been received. It allowed for our district team to come back together in the course of this month to actually share feedback as we reviewed each of those. We, at that point, also included Mr. Garcia, our purchasing manager, to further discuss and clarify options for either piggybacking contracts, looking at state exemptions when they have educational focus for zoning programming, when it's related to educational programming, and potential exemptions that are allowable by ESER for software use and the new definitions for technology use. We have work to finalize, we have work to do to finalize budgeting for rezoning work. We are looking We are looking at how we would plan for official updates and recommendations to the board for this August 21st meeting so that we might be able to send finalized scope of work from the recommended source to the board members for review. Our suggestion is that we would post, provide this information for review, and then post information in hopes that the board might be able to vote upon said recommendation on the 3rd of September. We, in our discussion of the opportunities that exist from each of these agencies, have asked for models to be delivered by the rezoning agencies, with a focus on socioeconomic diversity, transportation, and capacity, all which would be further discussed with, in terms of fiscal responsibility. And so with each of those models, we would be presenting them before the board, but it would show what the fiscal, the financial state would look like for each of the models so that we would be able to have a clear comparison for each. We also thought it important to move through the month of August as we went through our 10-day count for this current school year so that we can consider our current enrollment changes, since we were aware that our vouchers and other programs might impact enrollment for our county, which could also impact rezoning for an upcoming year. Some of the challenges that we faced were that, in our conversations with other districts, is that those districts, in some cases, have GIS teams or individuals on the team that specialize in rezoning efforts where we do not in Alachua County. Some of the programs are proprietary, and we wanted to ensure the feasibility of moving forward with any selected programs after the contract would potentially end in future years. We considered the level of familiarity with Florida rules and district processes, and we wanted to ensure that we had an opportunity to respond to priority questions from agencies, which included what is the will of the board, and to make sure that we had clear opportunities to identify that for the agencies and clarity for how we would move forward. The final challenge that was considered was the overall cost of the process. As we entertained discussion among the district team, some of our priorities that we focused on were looking at the capacity to provide, excuse me, to provide three working models for board, the board selection process, the ability to look at criterion-based layers that could be used for each model that is developed, to have experience working with the community and board members to communicate their process. So we were looking at the historical value of the work that was done in each of the agencies, and that those agencies also would be able to offer navigational tools online for community reference and use. We talked about the priority of positive working relationships with other school districts, preferably including Florida, but not required. So in all of the work that we were doing when we moved to our top choices, we also called the school districts for which those agencies have worked with to receive references from the actual agencies on the work that had been done. We discussed the importance of a history of consistent communication and responsiveness to district needs, as we know that in our prior experience, having a small company sometimes impacted the responsive nature in which we were able to get things done. That is not a negative to DRMP, of which we have had a very positive working relationship. But we did note that it was a barrier, and so we wanted to ensure that any companies had an opportunity to respond back so that we can make quick transitions and decisions. We also discussed opportunities for open dialogue and communication with district staff, ensuring team members were able to share direction and historical insights were taken into account in the event that a company that was selected did not give us the opportunity to go in and manipulate the actual data ourselves, that they would still receive information from district staff in order to do that work on an ongoing basis. And then finally, that we would connect outputs with mapping and files that would be shared with the district staff at the conclusion of receiving those models. We were, in this process, it was noted that the request for proposal or the RFP was not required for software-based programs and services, and we have since then been clarifying to ensure that we are doing everything that we are supposed to within the guidelines to make any recommendations to the board. So it is our hope that those final stages, which we've been in conversation with Mr. Garcia about, will be completely clear, and we can give these final notes to our board members this week with everything outlined so that we can move further in the process and hopefully make a recommendation to you before our next board meeting. Those are my updates, Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
Would you share that, because I have some questions I'd like to just get with you. Thank you. Is that you, Finn?
Well, I was going to do this at the request, but it goes along with what was in your report. Just as a reminder to the School Board, you know, annually, the valuation of the board attorney will occur by October 1st, and that's per, you know, policy 0156. And so I just wanted the board members to be on the lookout in your email. We'll be sending out that to the board members probably by the end of this week, so we can get it back and have it done by October 1st. And then per policy, the retention of the board attorney will be placed on the agenda at a regularly scheduled meeting, and that will occur on November 6th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, because as you all know, November 5th is the election day, and so we'll make sure that we get it on the board agenda then. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I can, McNeeley, have your light on?
Light on.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Just want to make sure. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I do apologize. When I had the mic earlier, I was so excited about sharing information about our improvements with the schools, the teams, the administrators, everyone. But what I failed to mention, the first week of school, I volunteered at the Department of Transportation in Alachua County Public Schools. Now let me tell you something, folk, that is not easy. I went five straight days, and I spent approximately seven hours each day. I was in the call center for the first four days, and please know, I met so many citizens in the call center because you have to answer their calls, you have to take what they want out of transportation, you have to talk to this person, that person. I ran, not ran, I didn't run. I talked to many people, and Madam Chair, I have to say this. Thank you to Mrs. Fisher, the new director of transportation, Mr. Woods, Ms. Sylvia Wilson in call center, Ms. Miles, Ms. Rivers, Ms. Benson, Ms. Starling, and on the fifth day, they asked me not to return. But I really learned a lot in that department. I enjoyed it, and I will tell you, anyone else next year, that is where you need to be. They are phenomenal people who work in that department, and I just have to say thank you to all of them and for allowing me to be in the midst of all of that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I know, because I volunteered in zoning, so I have much respect for those when you sit in these shoes that our staff are in, you learn a whole lot, but I just had to be there a short period of time. But when I realized Dr. McNeeley was over at Transportation, I just went right on back out the door and said they don't need both of us over here. But it is good to volunteer, and thank you to our zoning staff for all that you do. All right, all right, moving on. Thank you all so much. All right, moving on to citizens' input. For those that are here tonight, you have three minutes before the board, and we'll just keep up with the time. First, we have Ms. Tina Days.
Hi, my name is Tina Days, and I'm here to say, I want to thank y'all. Can't call no names, but y'all know who y'all are. Y'all stirred up something in me that I didn't know that I had. Y'all are wonderful mothers, wonderful grandmothers, and don't think it don't go rewarded, because it does. The Bible says, what you do for God will last. And y'all stirred up something in me, maybe in a couple of years, I might want to be a school board member. And I never used to think that, because I've been watching y'all. Y'all stirred up me as a single parent of four kids to come here and to speak. Superintendent Andrew, what can I say? We all know they gonna get rid of you in November. I'm gonna put it out there, I'm gonna say it. But you know what? You stirred up a mimi too. You are a God-fearing man, and don't think it's not gonna go rewarded. People, look, you have the respect of the students. It is not about political parties, it's respect of the students and the parents. You have earned my respect. And I want to say that this man take care of two kids and his, with his lovely wife on weekends. He won't even say it because he's that humble, but I'll say, I respect you for doing that. And now this, on August 21st, mark my words, because what I'm about to say is gonna come to pass. Parents at Duval look for another pre-K because they gonna close Duval, because we had people say that they didn't want Duval to open because of money. That's been said. So now, you don't have money for Duval, but then you have money for a superintendent search that's gonna take thousands. So where is the agenda of the love for the kids when y'all know people in the community want Duval to open? That's the first thing. The second thing, zoning. Oh yes, that's gonna come up also, but you know what? Because they're saying Eastside is low populated, the students from Westside gonna be bussed to Eastside. Mark my words, that's gonna happen. But I just wanted to say, I thank you, Chair, for the sacrifice that you have put in, taking from your family, hits on your character, and it's detestable. Have members campaigning against you, have members donated to your opponent on a Facebook community. I call it a Facebook School Board. But you hold your head up, God got better for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tyra Edwards. And then we'll have Jared Foles would be next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so.
State your name for the record.
My name is Tyra Edwards. I am the property manager at Residence of Oakview, also known as Horizon Sunset. And recently, we have found out that you, there's a lot of kids in the city of Gainesville that don't have a school bus, elementary school kids, okay? And so we did some research, me and my RSC, Jared, and we know that most of these communities where the kids don't have a school bus, they come from marginalized communities, and a lot of them are predominantly African-American communities. I do understand that there was, you know, supposedly been an email or a letter sent out to the parents, but I know that Alachua County motto is no child, you know, Florida, no child left behind. These children are being left behind. They don't have a way to get to school. They come from marginalized communities, so for their parents to get up and walk them to school is, that's a barrier. They live in these communities, they're trying to better their quality of life if they have jobs they need to be to, and they need to get on a bus, and then they're risking their financial, their financial, the financial part to take their kids to school. We have kids, the kids live, you know, two miles or less from the, they live two miles from the school. For these little kids to be walking to school by themselves is just not, that's just not right, you know? We have a big community where we at, it's people walking around, we don't know what's gonna happen to the kids while they're walking to school and while they're walking home. I'm hoping today, as we're here with some parents and others, and I'm hoping when you hear them speak today, that there can be a resolution made to help get these kids to school every day, because it is another barrier in front of them in their lives, and education is important. So if they're not going to school, then what else happens? That is very important in their life. They can't, some parents can't get their kids to school. They don't have any way to get them to school. They can barely get themselves around and get to work. So I'm coming here today to ask that there needs to be a conversation or something that you can, that, you know, that the board and the Transportation can look into to get all of the communities a school bus for the elementary kids' schools, because we have set them back. We have set them back because there is no bus for them to go to school. I find that very disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping, you can't clap out loud, please, you cannot do that. Thank you. Mr. Foles?
My name is Jared Foles, I'm the community director for the Residence at Oakview. I'm here to comment on the transportation issues our community has been having. Over the last week and a half, I've been primarily connecting with families who have been impacted by the ending of the courtesy routes. I know last year, around, I think it was January 16th, at that school board meeting, there was parents that showed up, and they spoke about two things, the lack of communication during that transition, and also the hazardous walking conditions. Today was the first day that I actually spoke to somebody on the phone, that was Ms. Eunice, about what is being done, or what could be done about this situation for the families that are impacted. Prior to that, Ms. McNeeley, she sent me an email in response to the questions that I had and the concerns that our community had. I appreciate that, however, we still don't have a clear path forward. I provided 55 names, 18 names from Campus Walk, and roughly 32 names from our community. After Transportation reviewed those names, it was determined that they did not qualify for transportation based upon the two-mile radius and not having a disability. The frustrating thing for our families is that I know for a fact some of our residents and some of the students suffer from these disabilities and have IEPs, but they're being turned away. I have one child that wasn't able to go to school for the first week, his mother is disabled. I have other families who are legitimately have to decide between being late for work or taking their child to school. Now, I may, I looked into this a little bit, just as far as the surrounding areas of Parker. Within the two-mile radius, there's 20-plus sexual offenders around Parker Elementary School within our community. That's not including the transient sexual offenders. So even if children are being told to walk by themselves, right, that's implied. However, even for the single mothers who are vulnerable, walking their children to school at 6:00 AM in the morning, that's a risk for them that has, and I don't think has really been considered. What I hope comes from this is that we are able to come together as a community and actually have this discussion so we can bring a lasting change to this situation, because the most vulnerable marginalized communities should not be impacted. Everyone should be able to get an education. So thank you for letting me speak, and I truly look forward to an open dialogue and bringing members of the community together to actually solve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Tawana Sylvester?
My name is Tawana Sylvester. I am here for some of the parents in Campus Walk neighborhood. I have been out individually speaking to each parent to see how this has been affecting them. There are maybe eight families that attend Parker. Of the eight families, only two of us have cars. So the other women are trying their best to get their kids back and forth to school. I happen to be taking 11 of them, my two included. My car only fits seven. So this is becoming a very disturbing situation for our community. The children, they're suffering from this because they don't have a way to school. They have to depend on someone else. They have to depend on someone else to get there. There are people that have disabilities, they can't walk their kids to school. One of the neighbors, she's in a wheelchair, she can't get her child to school. My kids, I can get them to school, but you know, there's still other kids that can't. And I'm trying to help them out. And I don't feel like that should be, you know, my responsibility. But because I'm in this community, I'm trying to help. We were, the buses were taken from us and there was no solution as to what we needed to do. We are in between 13th and University. The college kids can't even walk through there without getting hit on their bicycles, on their mopeds or anything. So I'm not sure how they expect our children to be safely walking to school from that distance. You know, it's just been a real hard time. And just talking to these other families and seeing what they're going through is just really been heartbreaking for me. I'm not sure what to do, um. We don't have a direct path. You know, if the kids do have to walk to school, there's no direct path. There's many roads in between our neighborhood and the school that they can travel. There's no crossing guards. There's no one to help make sure that those children are getting there safely. They're leaving home in the dark. Though, there's another lady who works nights. She gets off at 6 o'clock in the morning. She's walking home from work and then turning around and walking her children to school. We can't have that, you know? I don't think that's fair to the community. And I don't think anyone thought about what was going on when they decided to take the buses from these children. I don't think they thought about the communities that it was gonna affect and where these children are coming from. And I just would like to see something done about that. You know, I don't know who to talk to, I've never had to deal with anything like this. So I don't know who to talk to. I don't know how we can resolve this. But I'd like to be a part of that and speak with someone or something so that we can get this taken care of and help those children and help those families.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Erica Walker?
Good evening, I'm Erica Walker. I'm one of the parents from Captain's Walk. And I had to quit my job as well as others to make sure my kids, which I have two that attends Parker. And I had to quit my job as well to make ends meet and make sure my kids get to school. And Ms. Tawana Sylvester, I, she gives me and my kids a ride as well. But I mean, how long is that gonna last? I mean, she have other kids as well. She has kids that go to college, she has kids that go to work. And in between her working and her husband working, they only have two cars. And they're trying to work around. Everyone else is scheduled to make sure other people's kids are getting to school. I don't think that's fair to us, to the students. That's a long walk, it's very dangerous. It's dangerous for me, it's dangerous for them. And as we were dropping the kids off one morning to school, someone ran a li- a light at the, on University. As we were coming up a street, turning on University, they didn't look, they didn't stop. That could have been us impacted. We could have been in a very bad accident. And I was on our way from dropping the kids off from school. So that is a very dangerous path for those kids to be walking, especially mine. Mine are small, they're not even three feet tall. So I don't think that's very fair to me, my kids, and other other kids that are being held back from a bus. And it's just very dangerous. I mean, I don't know what else to say, but it's a lot going on and I don't think it's fair to none of us in the communities. As well as my community and other communities that's going through it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Ashley Ricks?
Hello, my name is Ashley Ricks. Um, I currently have two girls that go to Parker Elementary. Um, my oldest daughter, she has a disa- disability. She has acute transverse myelitis and she's cross paralyzed. And y'all took the bus, I'm coming from Oakview, Horizon Sunset. Y'all took the bus from these kids. And then expecting my daughter to walk with a cane from Horizon Sunset to Parker Elementary. Um, her disability hit a top, tapped the, the top of her spine and it made her not able to move one side of her arm and her leg. So she uses a wheelchair and she uses a brace to get, so get around in school. I have made sacrifices and stuff just to make sure she gets to school and picked up from school. And it's very hard. And I'm 28 years old and I'm trying to make it. I just hoping today, um, just me being here, um, never been in one of these, um, it can make a difference. Um, like I said, my daughter, she's sickly. Um, the bus is really all, all our transportation. Um, and it's a lot of other mothers that kids and little kids have to make sacrifices and walk from Horizon Sunset to Parker Elementary. And that's a dangerous road. Uh, 13th is very dangerous for our kids to wake up and have to walk 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning to make it to school. Um, so, thank you.
And thank you. Malu Brooks?
Greetings and humble salutations, everybody. My name is Malu Brooks. Um, I'm representing the Dream Defenders. And I'm also here for the Parker Elementary students. Um, our organization was founded after the murder of an innocent child. So the safety of children has always been rooted in the core of our organization. Um, we have at least five or six communities that are affected by not having this bus route. And this two mile trek, as people have mentioned earlier, has all kind of obstacles in our way for, in the way of these children. Um, and one thing that we've learned in, in the last 12 years as an organization is sometimes actions speak louder than words. So we truly implore you all to listen and hear the voices of these parents. Um, because all of our children deserve to have a safe route to education. Um, also, if there can be no resolution and the children have to walk to school, then we see it fit that if the children walk, they don't just walk on the sidewalk, but they walk in the middle of that road. And one thing I know is that this school board, let alone this city, does not want a children's march just to get a bus route for a safe route into these schools. So please, I ask you again, listen to these children. Because if not, they'll force you to listen to them. Um, thank you all.
Thank you. Sherry Roop, Roop? Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Hi, my name is Sherry Roop and I teach first gr- first graders, I'm sorry, at Parker Elementary. And we have a very large population of students who are not getting to school or having barriers to get to school. These are children who come from families that are already economically challenged, as everyone is today. I had parents break down to me on Meet the Teacher night, which should be a very happy time, that they couldn't get their child to school because they don't have a car. So they have to take a bus and then walk several blocks, drop their child off, then walk several blocks back to a bus again. Or take an Uber and wait in a 20 to 30 minute car line to put their child in the car. I did send an email to Dr. Edwards, haven't heard any word back on that yet. But I just want to give you some numbers here. Last year, we had seven buses with 160 students riding buses. This year, we have seven buses still with less than, um, half the buses filled. Forty-five students are riding buses this year. We bus children, ESOW children all over the county to come to our school because we are ESOW school. We, we drive them from Archer, from Waldo, from High Springs. But yet we can't get students in our own community to school. It's very disheartening. Um, we've had students not come yet, they've not entered yet. I've had students come late every day. I have 11 students that are affected by this bus challenge. And they're not able to get to school on time. I send them for a breakfast because that's more important, you know? And then they're sitting in the office waiting to be picked up in the afternoon. They're tired, they're hot, it's 100 degrees out there every day. And that's just not, um, feasible for these families who come. Um, 16th Street, 13th Street and University, as you know, are not safe. Twenty years ago, we had a fourth grader riding a bike with her parent, was dragged by a truck and killed on 13th Street. And that's gonna happen, it's gonna happen again. And it's just, I'm sorry to get so upset, but I feel like that we should be giving equal op- opportunity to an education, to every child. And I forgot everything else I was gonna say. But I'm just saying we're adding another barrier. Okay?
All right, and thank you, that's what I have in-house for citizens input. And all of these will be passed on to the appropriate party, um, to, uh, follow up with you all. So thank you all for coming out, um, tonight. Thank you so much. Are there any phone calls? One, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kylissa Barsha and I'm calling about a few things. I have a, I have a special needs daughter and she has to run from homeroom all the way to art, which is a different building. And she's afraid of falling. She is actually afraid of getting locked out as well. Guess what? That has happened. Thank heavens for the teacher looking out for her. Also, the bell does not dismiss you. I dismiss you. Well, they only have two or three minutes to get to the other class. Well, that bell makes you late for class. That gives you a tardy. My daughter has had a prenatal stroke of none of our faults. Due to that prenatal stroke, she has several palsy. Due to nobody else's fault. Here's another disadvantage that affects every student in Alachua County. This affects our disadvantaged black students, our, our, just poor students, our students who are already, I could, I, I don't even know the word that I want to say at the moment. Because I am so upset and I am so angry. I'm so hurt and I'm so upset by this because my son had to actually open this and use it today. And I thought of all these babies who could not possibly do their homework today because they had to use a laptop. Okay, that was given by the county, they have a laptop. But guess what? The online usage for that laptop was taken away. Okay, whatever, I get it. But guess what? Some homes do not have the ability to have internet. I thought about that. And I thought about how they could not open that A L E K S app to do their math homework that they needed to do for their advanced math. Or I don't even know if regular math has that app that they have to do for homework. And I'm sorry as I need to take a breath because I'm shaking. Also, back to my daughter who's afraid to get run over as she leaves for school. So she places her backpack on her back, what she's not supposed to because she has a wheelie backpack. But she places it on her back. That backpack is really heavy. And like I said, she had a prenatal stroke, she has several palsy. But she's trying not to get run over by the other car. Because my daughter has never had to cross a road in her life.
Your time is expired.
So now she's having to sleep with a sleeping bag.
Thank you. All right. That's all I have for citizen input. Moving on, Mr. Andrew with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The superintendent recommends that the school board approve the consent agenda as described in items two through 10.
They're motion. Uh, it's been moved by.
Second.
McNilly? All right. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, you're certain.
Ms. Jaren Chuck, I had this marked and didn't ask you. Item six, the consultant services, can you? Please, um. Or actually, I guess maybe, uh, one for the food service one, maybe Linda Wiley. Can you, can someone tell me about that one? Actually, the first two, GSE Engineering and then the second one.
Okay, um, food service, Linda Wiley is the consultant for the buying group, North Florida Buying Group. And, um, the buying group consists of, I think, 13 districts. And Alachua County is the administering district. And so we pay out and they pay us back. There's a share for each district that pays for that, for the consultant.
Okay, so it's kind of like she is overseeing work and we're like the administrator of her, but the other 13 districts reimburse this $48,000, is that what you're saying?
They reimburse us a portion of it. Each of us, each of the districts in the buying group pay for a portion based on the number of, um, the sales per district for the, the mainline dis- the mainline, um, can, bid.
Okay.
So it's, it's equally shared based on the size of the districts.
Okay, thank you. And the GSE Engineering and Consulting? I'm not sure who could talk about that one.
The, the first one on the list. That one is, um, something that we, when we do the old Tuiliger, we have to assess and make sure that, um, this, this consult, GSE comes in and evaluates the asbestos, the, if there are any hazardous materials, they have to come in and, um, and as, and assess what, what's going on with that property before we, before we take down the, the property.
The playground?
They look at the whole property to make sure that it's, that it's, um, safe to, because a lot of times we have to, we have to remove materials. And they go through and make sure that.
Your mic, the mi- something happened with the mics.
My mics are going in and out.
I can't, I don't know what she's saying, I don't know what's going on.
I'm sorry, is that better?
Uh, really?
Suzanne is here to. Let's try this one. Okay. So Suzanne can probably tell us more about. Suzanne Nguyen is here for Bill, um, Planning Construction. But the GSE is the engineering consultant that, that evaluates and helps us with, when we have to, to take down and demolition a property. We have to make sure it's safely handled. So if Suzanne wants to add something to that.
Good evening, Chair McGraw, Board Members, Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent. Are you referring to the GSE Engineering and Consulting purchase order in the amount of $37,642? Is that the one we're referring to?
Yes, that's, it says it's on consultant services.
We, we have an old playground on the old Tuiliger site that has arsenic contamination. And this, this, um, will be for the services for GSE to do the soil testing required, to define the limits of the contamination, to come up with plans to, um, remediate the contamination, to apply and get clearance on that property with the Department of Environmental Protection. You know, so everything we need to do to, to have that property be, uh, clean, basically. So decisions can be made on what to do with the property. Okay, so there's, that's, that's in addition to demolition that's happening. Uh, we've had environmental work inside the building for what Ms. Eunice. for what Ms. Unis referred to, asbestos abatement, things that need to be handled. So that needed to be evaluated and defined. We also have fuel storage tanks underground, under those buildings as well, that are being handled during the demolition of the project. So any environmental remediation will be taken care of during that process.
That brings clarity, because what was there wasn't very clear, that's why I had a question. And asbestos, that's why it was like asbestos on the playground, it didn't make sense.
Well, it's, I think that's, I think that's, you know, there's multiple, there's been multiple environmental consultants on this project. One of them is asbestos. You know, so there's a GLE and there's a GSE, and it gets confusing sometimes, so.
I was just asking because it wasn't clear, thank you for that. I had one other question if, with the second one, the professional development. Professional development provided to Cornerstone Academy? And I, when I read that, it sounds like we're providing the professional development, so I was trying to figure out why it was on here. So maybe I'm, maybe I'm not reading it properly. School Growth LLC?
Ms. Surt, now I'll have to go back to project development to find out a little bit more about who provided that professional development.
And then there's, on the bids and requisitions, there's a learning A to Z, RAS dash plus, subscription renewal?
Yes, ma'am, that's for our UFLI.
All right, those are all of my questions, thank you all. All right, we have one citizen input, Armando Grande.
I have a question as well.
Go ahead, Sarah, you can stand there until she.
I think this question is probably for Ms. Roll. My question is also about the professional development provided to Cornerstone Academy. I'm curious why we are paying for professional development provided to a non-district school.
Okay, Ms. Jaren Chuck and I will double check. Ms. Jaren Chuck is thinking it's probably SS related, but we'll have to go back and double check. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before my question, I have a question, but before I start my time, I have a question so I don't violate rules. If based on a person's name that's on here, that it is over this consent item?
I can't hear you. What are you saying?
My question is so I don't violate the rules or my First Amendment of saying a name. The person that's over this consent agenda item? I had a question before my time started. How do we address that if it's going to that person?
You can't say names, you can address it, but you can't say a person's name.
So my first question would be whoever the staff person would be or administrator over that. Madam Chair, would be a couple of things with respect to that person when it comes to the issues of arsenic in the soil for the site of Toowiliger. I want to also ask with, also within our property list of other schools, we also have examples of Williams with environmental contamination. And I guess also, Madam Chair, with respect to any other environmental contaminants within school board property or projects and properties owned, can that person also speak to any other environmental? Because I know also that was a top issue and has been for many, many years of not just arsenic, but benzene in the soil when it comes to Williams Elementary as well. But also, can we also, when it comes to the project list, Madam Chair, can we get an update on Castaldi for some of the environmental issues going on at Hawthorne, which seems to have gone to a back road? And I don't know who that applies to, but whoever was over the Castaldi, that would be information, so can those come back as well? And that's the question I'm asking. So whoever that's applicable to, out in the ethosphere, up there on the dais, or whoever, how do we get that information back, Madam Chair?
They hear your questions and they'll?
Okay, because I've actually asked that before and I never got anything back.
Okay, we'll make sure.
I know I've asked it many times and I don't get it back.
But we'll follow up with you. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to action items, turnaround option plan for Rawlings. Hutchinson and Coon.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Andrew. Rawlings Elementary earned a school grade of D for the 2023-2024 school year. The school has earned a D also for the 2022-2023 school year. Due to earning double Ds under the state's school improvement system, Rawlings Elementary has entered into Tier 2 status, and the district must complete a Top 1 Plan, which is due to the Bureau of School Improvement by September 1st. The district has chosen to implement the District Managed Turnaround Option Plan for Rawlings Elementary. This plan is before the board tonight. It contains the district's evidence-based supports, which will be implemented to increase Rawlings Elementary grade to C or above for the 2024-2025 school year, thereby exiting turnaround status. The superintendent recommends the board approve the Top 1 Plan for Rawlings Elementary as presented. Mr. Coon, who is the district turnaround principal supporting the school, is also here tonight to answer any questions you may have regarding the supports that are being provided to Rawlings Elementary.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Abbott. Seconded by Dr. McNeely. Any questions?
Oh, I have some.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
Okay, bear with me. I think that this is a really important plan, not only because of the significance of it, but because Rawlings is a year-round school now, it's a new model. And I think it's an opportunity to do things differently and to make some changes that have some significance for the kids that are there. And so I've gone through this plan and I have questions. As I look at the percent of students that are proficient in all areas, whether it's ELA, whether it's math, it doesn't matter what category, if it's students with disabilities, if it's economically disadvantaged students, in every area, in every area, the students went down. And so whatever was done at Rawlings last year needs to be completely obliterated because nothing is working there. And so I suggested when the year-round model came up that it would be an excellent time to not only at, you know, change the calendar, which was primarily the only thing that was done, but we get some extra time in that day. These kids have been suffering for a long time with instruction that's not, hasn't been effective. And, you know, you can, you can, you can do some double dosing in reading and math if you have some extra hours in the day. There's been issues for years with teachers with certification at those schools. And if you don't have certified teachers, it's hard to be an effective instructor. It would have been an opportunity to possibly, you know, make that a priority. We're gonna get our teachers in here. We're going, we're going to incentivize teachers to want to be at Rawlings to be effective. And if you, if you, and I've said it before, but if you, if you are a teacher in a Title 1 school, your job is different from a teacher who teaches at a school where all kids come to school ready to learn. And it's easy to go in and teach a lesson and have a kid pick it up the first time. It makes you feel really good, I mean, you know, it's a great job. And, but when you go in there and a child's not getting it, and you have to be creative and you have to be patient, and you have to teach a skill over and over until they master it, that takes a special kind of person. And the teaching day for that person and the prep and the stress is different for a teacher at a school where kids are getting things right away. And there needs to be a different monetary incentive for those schools to get there that's significant. Because they are, they are, it is a much more stressful job than teaching at a school where every kid's getting it very easily. We are not serving struggling kids well, even at the schools where kids are getting it very easily. There's that subgroup that's still not getting it, and it's been years. And so, and I said this last year, but how many more years are we gonna go on and let those kids continue to get a subpar education? And so I went through this and I looked at it, and just bear with me, because I spent a lot of time on it. And it said identified causes of low performance, staff turnover. Well, let's make it a priority. And I don't, I don't see anywhere, anywhere in here where we have, we've said that's, that's a top priority. Intervention teacher and coach were pulled to provide instruction in an effort to offset staff needs, and then that decreased the ability to provide interventions. If we had certified teachers in classrooms, we wouldn't have to have as many interventions. But when you don't have those certified teachers and they're teaching reading, you gotta, you gotta, they've gotta get the instruction somehow. Students lack foundational skills to read and comprehend. That's, it's not rocket science to figure that out. They haven't had really good core instruction in years. So why would we expect them to have that? It's, it's, it's really mind-boggling. Then they come to the recommendations for school improvement and enhance Tier 1 instruction in UFLI. That was done last year. So what is gonna be done differently to enhance that? How is that gonna be done differently? Analyze data to get to determine the root cause of low performance. Well, they don't have the foundational skills. If they had the foundational skills, they'd be able to function more proficiently at grade level. Enhance the skills and capabilities of the coaches who work within the school by providing them with guidance. This will come from the district level. This will ensure that the school-based coaches receive the necessary support and mentorship. So if we're mentoring the coaches who are mentoring the teachers, doesn't it make more sense just to put those teachers in the classrooms? I mean, there's a lot of mentoring going on here, and the kids, the people who knew that instruction the most are the kids in the classroom, and it's not happening. Now, creation of an attendance response plan to monitor and increase student attendance. There's been issues at that school for years for attendance. This is not a novel idea. What is it that's gonna be done differently? The PBIS, utilize PBIS. We don't even have data. I don't have data. I've asked for it at the last meeting. I don't have data from how it was last year, it would improve. I know from PM 1 to PM 2, it went down. I don't know from PM 1 to PM 3, because I don't have that data yet. If students weren't sitting in classrooms feeling frustrated, behavior would improve. Utilize UDL for learning, it sounds wonderful. It sounds, that's a great idea, it sounds like a marvelous idea. But how will this be utilized? Will teachers be required to put it in their lesson plans? Do principals check lesson plans on a daily basis, on a weekly basis? Or do they check it when they go in for an observation? So how do we know that the UDL is even in the lesson plans? How do we know if it's being implemented in the classroom? Are there gonna be people in there to see that they're using UDL? It says rigorous walkthroughs, we've been having walkthroughs. I've done walkthroughs. And, 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 look, everything's down, every grade is down. So are the walkthroughs working? If this is a plan that's gonna be used to turn Rawlings around, then it's gotta be something different. There's, I don't see anything different in here, and there's nothing jumping out. And it seems like the same thing that we were doing last year and the year before, and it's getting worse. And so if this district, if you, if this district truly, truly cared about these kids, they'd be, they would have taken advantage of that year-round model, and they would have done things differently. We're in the second week of school. Please do not give up on this school year, because we've already started. Make some significant changes to this so that those kids can have a chance. It's, it's, it's the only right thing to do. We're a pilot for the, for the state for this year-round model. We could be, we could, for once, Alachua County could shine by doing things right. And not just for that, but more importantly, for these kids that are sitting in these classrooms. That's all, and I, there's no way that I could vote on to approve this like this, because I don't, I don't see that it's gonna make any difference for the kids.
Were there any other questions?
So I share a lot of Ms. Abbott's concerns, but more specifically, even if you bring this school's grade up to a C, if the performance of students with disabilities does not improve, they will be in the same turnaround position because they will be in Year 6 for that SS subgroup. And as a former special education teacher and as a parent of two children with disabilities, all I can say is this is appalling. To have performance levels for our students with disabilities in ELA and math of 3% proficiency is absolutely heartbreakingly appalling. And I know that we have intersections here that we have students with disabilities who are also economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities who are black and economically disadvantaged. But when we look at the SS subgroups, it's those students with disabilities who are really, really struggling at Rawlings. And that's a reflection of our failure to provide the level of service they need. And so I see this MTSS pilot, which will help identify students who need additional services. But our students with disabilities are already identified. And if we're not even giving them the services that they need, I don't know how identifying the kids, additional kids who need those same services is going to help. And I don't see where we are going to really, in the plan. I don't see in the plan how we are going to provide additional resources to Rawlings. And it needs to be certified teacher resources, I agree on that. I don't agree that we need to take away coaches. I think that's a short-term solution to a long-term problem, and I'll get into that a little more in my comments. But we need more, we clearly need more ESE support. And I don't see where that is in the plan. And I think the plan really, really needs that. The, now I'm gonna get to the need for coaching. So I've asked for this before, and I know it's difficult data to get from HR, but we know which teachers are out of field. But we have teachers who are considered in-field because they were able to memorize a study guide and pass the elementary education certification exam. I love that they wanna come to teaching as a second career. I appreciate them so much, but they do, those teachers who come with a temporary certification, they're not out of field. They passed that certification exam, we're not sending a letter home, but they did not go through an educator preparation program. And so we talk about we're gonna implement universal design for learning, which part of that is differentiated instruction. If you did not go through, and we're going to analyze data, continuously analyze data. These are skills that are taught in educator, in good educator preparation programs. I know not everyone gets the same quality of educator prep program, but my concern is, especially if we're moving coaches into classrooms, how are we making sure that, because I know that we have a lot of temp certified teachers, as well as out-of-field ones, as well as long-term subs. How are we making sure these people who are, they care about the kids, they're doing this work, but they did not have the benefit of going through a training program? How are we making sure that they know how to do these things? And this is why I think, you know, we need certified teachers in classrooms without a doubt, but I think moving our coaches into the classrooms is a short-sighted solution, because yes, we can get those 18 to 22 kids a teacher this year, but how many teachers who are first-year teachers, who are out of field, who are alternately certified, how many of them will now quit the profession because they didn't have adequate support? How many of them will not be able to serve the students in their classrooms because they didn't have that adequate support to learn how to do these things that a fully certified teacher who went through an educator preparation program learned how to do? And so, you know, I, I want every student to have a certified teacher, but I am extremely concerned with our focus on moving people out of professional development, out of coaching positions, out of these positions that's. positions, out of these positions that support the work of hundreds of students and support the work of teachers, building teachers who have the skills, resiliency, and support to continue in this profession. I worry that if we continue pulling teachers who were providing that support, that in the long-term, we are going to have fewer highly qualified teachers in classrooms and that we are actually in the long-term losing teachers by doing this. And I do know that we have lost teachers by doing this. Some of these people who have experience in coaching and professional development leave and go to other school districts or to UF where they can continue doing what they've built their professional careers on. So I have concern with that and I have concern with what I don't, what I don't see for targeting students with disabilities. And, and I know, I mean, I, I respect you both tremendously, Ms. Hutchinson and Mr. Kuhn and Dr. Arduzer and Dr. Graham and their team at Rawlings, but, but we have to make a big change, not, not little changes. Thank you.
Do I like to respond?
Yes. Thank you, thank you for the input. Thank you for, um, for that guidance. And those that know me know, doing this work is incredibly important to me. I know it's important to Ms. Hutchinson and all of the teachers, the staff that work at Rawlings and all of our turnaround schools. As you said, it is incredibly heavy work. It is incredibly hard work. And it is not the same as some of other schools. What I can tell you about this particular plan, first, no one at Rawlings is excited about what happened. Everybody is looking at this data, has looked at this data and is incredibly upset, not for themselves, but because of the students and the impact that it's having on the students and, and what it says about the work that is being done for the students or was being done. To start with, and, and I realize that when you're looking at a plan on paper and it looks similar to some of the things that have happened in the past, I would have the questions as well. Okay, what's different? One of the things that I will say is that in addition to looking at this and owning it, first, they're fully staffed, which is fantastic. They were not fully staffed last year. That was one of the things. And, and I'm not going to make excuses, but that is one of the things that significantly impacted third grade in particular. At one point, they had eight different teachers or people rolling through third grade, which significantly impacted. Now, that's one grade level. It's not all students with disabilities. It's not all grade levels. But there were a number of things that happened. They're fully staffed right now, which is amazing for any school, but especially a turnaround school. The other thing that's going on is that they have really and truly bought into the, the plan that Dr. Arduzer and her team have put together prior to this plan even coming to fruition. They're all excited about being there. They want to be at Idowoud. I'm sorry, Idowoud.
We know. We understand.
They want to be at Rawlings. And, you know, I have been there several times since coming into this role. I know Ms. Hutchinson had as well. One of the things that I will say is as I've gone in, worked with Dr. Arduzer, worked with the team, obviously they're, they're the people on the ground doing the work. Any suggestions we have had from the district level, there's immediate, they listen to those suggestions, implement those almost immediately. And sometimes seeing it, seeing it from the outside does help. Now, as far as you mentioned ESE, obviously we have, you're right, all of the areas. We had a couple of our SS subgroups increase, but all of the other areas dropped. Students with disabilities, it, it is absolutely not good. The thing that I will say is they have four ESE teachers. Three of the four are fully certified ESE and we have one that is pending certification. So they have the solid foundation of ESE support to help those ESE students. A number of the things that we are doing, tho, those that have, and I'm, I'm not speaking about the past, I'm only speaking about moving forward, but those of you that know me know that I am eyes-on, hands-on, looking at everything that's happening. And if things aren't going well, then we make adjustments. We're not just going to immediately adjust, but we are there looking at everything that's happening. When it comes to walkthroughs, yes, we've all, I've been doing this for 29 years as an educator. There have been times where people came into my class doing a walkthrough and frankly, even times that I've gone in and done walkthroughs. And it, yes, we're checking a box, right? Not all the time, but in this case and in all of the turnaround work I've done, the purpose of this walkthrough, the purpose of it is to see if what is working, what's not working. If it is working, let's continue it. If not, let's change the practice. Let's fix this, figure out what's going on first and then fix the problem. That's where the coaches come in. Nowhere in the plan is it taking our coaches and putting them into classrooms. We're fully hired. The purpose of this is to take our district-level coaches and really push them into classes to observe, to coach, see the practices that are taking place, modify those teaching behaviors if we need to in order to affect positive change with the students. And I know that this is, these have probably been in plans before, but we are, we are earnestly going to be monitoring this and make sure that these changes are taking place as we, as we move forward. There are a lot of things in the plan that, yes, are things that, it's good practice. Tier-one instruction, it's good practice. If it's not being done, nothing's going to work. We're going to focus on that with our walkthroughs, working with our district team, with outside agencies, once we get things in place to really be able to focus instruction and support the students. And again, if things are not happening, if we're not seeing the progress that we need to see, then we'll reset and move forward and do something very different.
And one other thing I would like to add that is occurring as well. It was mentioned regarding teachers not coming into the field with a degree in education and we are pretty, we are very much aware of that. And some of the things that is occurring is the professional learning that's occurring within the school. They've already started with professional learning with our state regional literacy director. And the purpose behind that professional learning is building teacher capacity as it relates to instructional practices and not just receiving the professional learning, but then Mr. Chaplin is going into the classrooms and following up with the teachers and making sure the implementation from that professional learning is occurring. And as it relates to our students with disabilities, we do have that partnership with FIN, Florida Inclusion Network, and we're going to be working with them with professional learning for the teachers as well to ensure that we're providing our teachers with those instructional practices directly related to students with disabilities.
And I did want to follow up as well. I want to thank both Ms. Hutchinson as well as Mr. Kuhn. And I will tell you that one thing that is different this year is the fact that we do have now two turnaround principals. So I will say that last year, Ms. Hutchinson carried the load and, you know, leading turnaround in schools, but also supporting turnaround is exactly what they stated, very heavy work. So we now have two turnaround principals that are doing the work. Mr. Kuhn is solely dedicated to ensuring that our Rawlings Elementary receives all the supports that are needed. Just to address even the MTSS that you spoke about as well, Dr. Rockwell, our students, even if they're, they're already receiving ESE services, it does not mean that they don't need the support of the MTSS systems of support. So to make sure that those students are receiving not just the supports that they're getting through their IEPs, but also those tiered levels of supports, we need to make sure that teachers know that they should also have access to strong tier-one instruction as well as tier-two to ensure that they are making the growth that is needed. As a part of that, my team as well as student services, ESE with Ms. Black, our chief, Dr. Edwards, as well as Coy Owens, met last week to ensure that we were identifying the root causes for why we, our students with disabilities are not making progress at Rawlings Elementary, but frankly, across our district. We, we identified the fact that we need to make sure that students are scheduled properly. Our teachers that are supporting our students with disabilities have the supports and the professional learning that they need, making sure that we're implementing the IEPs as directed. So we've begun that work. We will continue that work and that work will be directly channeled back into the schools. I also want to make sure that, you know, we don't, you know, forget the fact that within our district just this year, 60% of the teachers that were hired are coming in from out of the field of education. We continue to support our teachers. We continue to provide mentoring through the professional learning department. That department has been pretty much cut in half because many of those teachers did go back into the classroom to ensure that we had more qualified teachers in the classroom as well. We continue to support the Rawlings Elementary, the leadership of Dr. Arduzer. Last year was her first-year leading turnaround and, and that's a different type of leadership. So we will continue to do that. Mr. Kuhn is mentoring her to make sure that she has all of the, all of the supports that she needs.
Dr. McNeil, you have your light on?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kuhn and Ms. Hutchinson, I have prayers for you first of all. And I know we don't talk about that in the school system very much, but because I know both of you, intently, I know we can depend on the two of you to turn this school around with the help of the administration, the teachers, the parents, the community. And I'm here to tell you that whatever you might need further than this turnaround program plan, I'm ready to provide that at all costs. It does not matter. I'm saying that to my colleagues sitting on this dais. I want this school, and we're not leaving out Alachua, but Mrs. Rol explain the different tiers. So that's why we're not saying anything about Alachua tonight. But the Rawlings situation will turn around because I'm looking at two experts other than the people who are to my left, who are on the team as well. And then the one on my right, Deputy Superintendent, and not leaving out the fantastic leader sitting right next to me. I know it's going to be done. It's not going to turn over colleagues overnight. I hear many of you saying it's all on paper. And whatever the small goals are, I expect by September 19th, when we have the first CAT meeting or the second CAT meeting, that you will have some more data to share with us. But I'm, I've been where you've been, not as a turnaround principal, but a principal in a failing school. And so I know what it takes. Several of my colleagues to my left were with me. Some of you colleagues who are listening to me tonight, who are in different schools, you were with me. And so it's going to take 99.5% energy changes, as colleague Abbott and colleague Rockwell said. It's going to take a lot of monitoring. As far as incentivizing folk, I know that's a collective bargaining issue and I will not get into that tonight. But because I have relatives who work in some other districts, who are in low-performing schools and what's being provided there, I'd like to be recommending that in a meeting where we can talk about that. This is not the time. One of the things that parents will have to be totally engaged, as you know, and so many times, parents are shared the information, the assessment, results, but they have to know even a little bit more. I was criticized some days ago about putting a lot of things back on the parents, but let me tell you, as a parent, you are going to have to be involved and it cannot just be the school, okay? Ms. Hutchinson and Mr. Kuhn, when you see us on the 19th of September, in fact, that's the day after my birthday, so it'll be a great birthday gift to me to see the results of the improvements that you, the two of you, the administration at Rawlings, the chief of teaching and learning, the deputy, the superintendent, we are going to all roll up our sleeves. You also need that kind of support. And I heard clearly what is expected from my colleagues. I don't, I'm not holding them hostage. That's their opinion and they should have that. But I'm telling you, as a former principal, I know what it's going to take. And it's going to have to be more than what's written here. And as you find those areas and those gaps, they will close. And when I say gap, meaning the structure that's been outlined here, you will see, yes, this needs to be modified. No, this is not working. We will not continue. So I applaud both of you for standing in front of us. You knew that you were going to have some opinions given to you and I will be the first to tell you, if you're not up to par, I'm going to be saying some other things than I said tonight. But congratulations to both of you for this cohesiveness that will be needed and that you will provide. The same to Stella Arduza, Mr. Graham, there's another AP there, and I don't have that name.
Ms. Tomlinson.
Thank you, Ms. Tomlinson. And to every single teacher, we care about you and whatever they should need or whatever they are lacking, please tell us. Please let us know. Don't wait till the last minute. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I won't prolong the time, but Dr. McNeil, Mr. Kuhn, I, he and I had a conversation before the meeting about lunchtime. My, he'll probably tell you guys, it was pretty much like along the line of what Ms. Abbott, what you said was pretty much mine. But Dr. McNeil, you said something now that, the reason I put my light on, involving the parents and saying for them. So I, I, as a board member and I, a community member, I think when we have the CAT meetings, the parents need to know clearly, because I've been to CAT meetings and parents didn't know clearly. It was not communicated clearly to them how severe the problem was. It's like rah rah sis mumbaa and we're here, right? So I think parents need to know very clearly what it means when we say in 2324 that 7% of the third graders were on grade level. They need to know clearly, if we have 10 students and you count off, you know, how many of those were on grade level? And to know, they need to like, it's almost like shock therapy. We, because we're, we're telling people, we made all this progress. The school grade can improve, but we still, when we look at the data and looking at it at this point in time right here is what got me into the seat where I am. And this is all that has been my mantra. You know from me working with you at Idowoud, but I was doing that before you got to Idowoud. I, I got to the point of where I was advocating for more resources for something that happened with your colleague that's standing right there beside you. So this has been my focus and wanting to make sure that even though the school grade improves or maybe a high grade, maybe an A, I mean, but the subgroup data has been what my, where my concern has been. And we need to make sure when we have that first CAT meeting, it does not need to be, we're here because the school is a double D. Well, everybody know that. They need to know like, your kids aren't reading on grade level because so many people tell me, my child has a C or makes all As and Bs, but if, and I, I hate the high stakes testing, but like I told my daughter, this is, this, this what we got. This is what we- This is what we have right here. So I'm not going to, going to beat you guys up or anything anymore. You've answered my questions. I'm hopeful that, and I think we have a new leadership team there, Dr. Arduza, Dr. Dre, and Ms. Tomlinson. This is just their second year, you know, getting in there, and they've got a new school calendar that, as Ms. Rol said in the meeting, that this is an intervention for those students there. So they've got a new calendar, got new staff, we got fully staffed teachers, which is good. So I'm just hoping that whatever we can do as a board, Dr. McNeely says she wants things to, us to be able to find the money to do what it takes to support them. It does take money. And so I will say, and I'm going to say this, this is a side comment, but I'm going to say, I have said with the Early Learning Center, that was a diversion of resources, and we need those resources for K-5 because that's what we, that's where our, our charge is right now. That's what we, that's where we get the bulk of our funding, and that's what we're charged with it. I'm not, I, I know having foundational skills and students coming to us in kindergarten ready to learn is something, but what we get our bread and butter on and the money that we're spending at Duval now, I got another, I'm going to have a request, because those students that we had in here, it is essential that we have those students at Parker in school. So I got a request like you, Dr. McNeely, we got to figure out a way to be able to pay for that. So thank you all for your work. I know it's going to be hard, and whatever we can do, you all bring back to the board. And we just have to roll up our sleeves and we have to make hard decisions, sacrifices. We may have to give up something someplace else so that we can support these schools that have a lot of children that are high need, and they need more resources. And when the more resources is more money. It takes money to buy, for staffing, but I'm not for just staffing just to pay people money. That is not what I'm, I want people that's going to be in there, much like Ms. Abbott and Dr. Rockwell has expressed it a lot more eloquently than I can, but I want us to be able to meet the needs, educational needs of our students.
All right. Thank you all so much. I've done the walkthroughs at Rawlings, and I appreciate being at the beginning of the year. And this is a great opportunity for us with the pilot program, and I agree with a lot of things that Ms. Abbott and Dr. McNeely have said. But one of the questions when Dr. McNeely mentioned Alachua, is Alachua now fully staffed? No, no, no subs, certified teachers?
Alachua's staff, they don't have any subs.
Okay, great. That's great. Okay. I thought I heard that. I wanted to ask that question that triggered. All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any citizens want to speak? No, I thought I had. All right.
I'm nay.
You're nay. So four one. You got it, Ms. Green?
All right. Thank you all so much. Thank you. School Resource Officer Agreement, Mr. Pelton. You're the next four.
Regarding school resource officers and school resource deputy agreements, beginning with action item number two, School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of Alachua. An agreement has been prepared with the local law enforcement agency, City of Alachua Police Department, to provide a school resource officer program in Alachua County Public Schools within the agency's respective jurisdiction. According to this agreement, the agency shall staff schools within its jurisdiction with police officers who will work in the schools as school resource officers, as described in the agreement. The total cost for this contract is $299,574 and is supported by both Safe School Allocation and General Revenue Funds. The superintendent recommends the school board approve the school resource officer agreement with the City of Alachua as presented.
Care motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any citizen input? Hearing none. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number three, School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of High Springs. An agreement has been prepared with the local law enforcement agency, City of High Springs, to provide a school resource officer program in Alachua County Public Schools within the agency's respective jurisdiction. According to this agreement, the agency shall staff, shall staff the schools with, within its jurisdiction with school resource officers, as described in the agreement. The total cost for this contract is $134,645.10 and is supported by both Safe School Allocation and General Revenue Funds. The superintendent recommends the school board approve the school resource officer agreement with the City of High Springs as presented.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
They're moving and properly seconded. Any citizen input? Hearing none. Any board discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to action item number four, School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of An agreement has been prepared with the local law enforcement agency, City of Gainesville, to provide a school resource officer program in Alachua County Public Schools within the agency's respective jurisdiction. According to this agreement, the agency shall staff schools within its jurisdiction with police officers who will work in the schools as school resource officers, as described in the agreement. The total cost for this contract is $1,514,775.94 and is supported by both Safe School Allocation and General Revenue Funds. The superintendent recommends the school board approve the school resource officer agreement with the City of Gainesville as presented.
All right. Motion.
Move with staff recommendation.
Second.
They're moving and properly seconded. Any citizen input? Hearing none. Board discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And action item number five, School Resource Deputy Agreement with the Sheriff's Office of Alachua County.
Move with staff recommendation.
All right.
Second.
They're moving and seconded. Is there any board, I mean, community input, citizen input? Hearing none. Board discussion? Any questions?
I do have one question. I was waiting for this, not about this, but I am, I'm going to request that we have executive session for safety and security around these right here. If we can extend the time up when we have our next executive session, so we don't have to make a second day, if we could do that. And I'll send an email to Ms. Green.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to citizen input. I do have one. Amonde, Amando Grande, Gomez.
I wanted to ask a question of policy and procedure within the guidelines of these school boards and what you have governing, which prevents or impedes First Amendment right. And I guess, Madam Chair, I would go, if we can get feedback from the attorney on what inhibits, and your policies and procedures of limiting or impeding First Amendment rights for us, and where specifically is in the guidelines that allows you to say you can't use certain things when it comes to names as far as First Amendment rights? So that is a question I would like to add, because I've looked at your guidelines, even in your general subsection, under C, I didn't see anything listed, but I guess that would be for your attorneys, because I don't want to put any names. So, Madam Chair, if that could be listed. I know, again, I'll say, you'll say I'll get something back, but I never do. But I do want to go on the record to say that First Amendment is extremely important, and as somebody that served eight years in the United States Army, that is extremely important for anybody, whether you agree or disagree with them, that they have a right to have their First Amendment. And to have it impeded is really interesting and rich in this country, especially in this county, where we say we value the right of free speech.
All right. Any phone calls? Okay. Any other citizen input? All right. Moving on to board member request. Ms. Abbott?
I was wondering, I know, I don't think we're to the 10-day count yet, maybe today is the 10th day, I don't know. But I'm wondering, like at Williams, do we have any information about how many of those students that were in the magnet program went elsewhere, back to their zone school, to a private school? Do we, we have numbers on those students at this point? It doesn't have to be an exact number, but an approximation.
You see it?
And I guess that was a request that'll be answered at some other time?
Okay.
Because I'm not getting a response.
So, Madam Chair, if I may? Yes, we're on the eighth day of counts right now, and so we can get that information back to you and pull it by Williams. What I can tell you is, as of today at 1:00 PM, we have 25,925 students enrolled in our charter schools. It's 25,925. That was as of 1:00 PM today. We have in our charter schools, which are under our jurisdiction, 1,991 students. And we, and we have been, as you all say, going through the 10-day count processes and working with schools and pulling back allocations if they're under-enrolled. Some schools, we leave allocations. We've also been providing additional allocations. And so in tonight's discussion, we were discussing Rawlings. Rawlings has three additional basic units allocated and one additional ESE beyond their normal allocation. And we made an effort not to pull anything from there as we got going. And so we've stuck with that, and we have not, not lowered their allocation.
So at what point would an allocation be changed? If you had 13 students in a K through three classroom or, because I know that there were schools last year that had kindergarten, first, second, or third grade classes, some of them had 13 or 15 kids in there the whole year. And that was not just in one class, that was in a couple of classes. And so I'm just, you know, with teacher shortage the way it is, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't make more sense at those, especially at those schools where the kids are doing really well, to have the class size just a little bit higher and, and, and moving some of those other teachers to schools that, that are needier. And so I'm just, I, I just, what I want is that I want it fair and consistent across the district. So if we're doing that for some schools, and, and I'm not saying it's being done this year, but if we're doing that, then I want to make sure it flows to other schools. And so I think that's really important.
Dr. Rockwell, saw your light.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my concern is it sounds like there are students enrolled at Carolyn Parker who have not been able to get there due to transportation barriers. And I know when we discussed eliminating courtesy routes, one of the things we discussed doing was looking at our most vulnerable communities and our elementary school students and trying to make sure that those elementary school students from vulnerable communities were not having their attendance negatively impacted. We're on day eight of the 10-day count, and if we don't get those kids to school in the next two days, we're not getting FTE funding for them. So my request is that we, we figure out something, and, you know, I don't have any way to back up the data that was provided by the teacher who came, but it sounds like there are buses making routes to Carolyn Parker that have empty seats that we could potentially add a stop to without putting another bus on the road. And if this is something that we can fix immediately and get those children to their school, especially, I mean, we need them in school period, but especially if we can get them there before the end of the 10-day count so that they get their funding as well, that's incredibly important. Thank you.
Mr. Sir.
Thank you. I have a couple requests. The bus for Parker situation, that was one, I think, that I, I was going to, to request as well, that we look at that as well as the cost of it. I heard the info about the buses not being full. I don't know if that's true information, and maybe we look at having some type of satellite stop to decrease the number if we could put them on an existing bus that has capacity. So maybe we do that. I also wanted to know the enrollment by school, not just Williams. I know we're in the 10-day count period, but if we, you could get that to us when we're, when we conclude that period. I like it by all of the schools. And if you would also share with us the enrollment number that was used to prepare the budget. I asked for that from early, and I think Ms. Neal just, she was traveling, and I think she forgot to get it to me. The other thing, the safety and security executive session in September with that, the existing executive session, I think that we need that, and that came out of a conversation I had with Chief Pelton and some new guidelines that we're going to have, and that we are allowed to have that meeting. So I'd like to have that. And vacancies by school, not just SI schools, we've been, that was a request that I made, and we were getting that, and we, we got that all last year. But if we could get that going forward, if you would supplement not just the SI schools, but if we could get that so we'll know, because we've received, you know, emails, and I don't want folks to think we're only worried about the schools that are in school improvement, but those are our schools that are needing the most impact. And the last thing is a budget workshop before we approve the final budget. I think we, as a board, need to sit down and the superintendent bring us some strategies that are going to be employed to deal with the negative impact of potentially a large decrease in our FTE. So I think we need to be looking at that. If that has not already been done, it could have already been done, but I think it should be shared with the whole board so we can give some direction and on that. Thank you.
Ms. Andrew, you have anything?
Yes, ma'am. I've got it. Thank you.
You're good? All right. All right. Well, this meeting is adjourned at 8:21. Thank you.